Right, it's time to now set the air. I'd like to ask if please rise for the Town of Plainfield Board of Select and me for April 26, 2021. If you guys would pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America to the Constitution, which is only in our law, and it's literally just as well.
All right, can we go through a roll call?
Art Cagman.
Kevin Kedlin.
Kevin Kedlin.
Thank you very much.
And item C, which is the approved meeting minutes for 412, 2021.
I'll make the motion to approve the meeting minutes from 412, 2021.
Second.
Any other discussion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item D, public comments.
Yes, Dan Real, on 20, I'll be quick. I actually have about four things and I have a hard stop pretty soon. F3, it looks like we have some line item transfers. I don't see what those are, but the general concern is that the more of these, at least I've been seeing, and some people share that concern, it seems like maybe we haven't budgeted right or planned appropriately. So maybe if we kind of were a little better on that about things that, you know, vehicles that suddenly rust over, buildings that suddenly fall apart, communication systems that suddenly need to be replaced, maybe we could kind of avoid that. F5, this, it's great, that we're getting money, but one of the things I've actually seen from all the stimulus stuff is there has been a lot of clawback with a lot of the unemployment benefits, the paycheck protection program, a lot of the other things. So the one thing I have been paying attention to is the more people tend to get creative with those monies, the more likely it is that there would be an audit. And unfortunately, there have been clawbacks. F6, I wasn't quite sure what General Statute 7-747B said. So I did look up Title VII. That title only goes to 620E. So I think the public has no idea of what particular law is cited. I know a lot of people do like to look these things up. And we have had some issues in the past where notices haven't quite cited it. So it would have been helpful to know what that was. And finally, one thing I'm seeing here is VII and VIII. This involves the initiation of two prohibited practice charges with state board of labor relations. The thing that concerns me here, and you know, I mean, the good thing is, we've done the correct thing. We've put it on the board of select agenda. That's what the town charter says we've got to do. The other thing is, it seems there's a presumption that town council would be taking over, I believe, the Sussman Shapiro. The thing that I can say from my own knowledge is, the insurance policy would appear to cover that because it's not intentional act. So with that, I'm just looking forward to seeing how the board deals with it. And if I don't catch all of it, I'll watch it online.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? I will answer one of your comments, the very first one. You were talking about line item transfer 73. In there, we have been in a freeze for the entire year. So we have been able to stop utilizing some of the monies because of that, and therefore we have some savings. Don't forget, we're also in COVID. COVID-19 has been, so we cannot do certain things. And we'll get to that when we get to the line item transfers. Anybody else in the public? All right, so we go into old business, I need, which we do not have any of tonight. And item F is new business. Before we go in any further, I would, I entertain a motion to add, we do need to talk about 3A. 3A should be the discussion on the bid process for which we had a bid for work to be done on parks, which we'll be also talking about in 3. But we did discuss that. I would discuss an act on the bid process for the parks and take action on the bids as a team without coming.
Make that motion to add item 3A.
Discuss an act on the recreational bids. Okay.
I'll second that.
And any other discussion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now add 3A to the agenda. So we go through item 1. Consider an act on tax refunds as requested by the tax collector to owe $44.19 as follows. Heather L. Spolento, $44.19.
How many would you consider an act on tax refund to refund $44.19 for Heather?
Spirit, Michael. Second.
Motion number 2, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 2, discuss an act on the acquisition of used vehicle and the planning zoning department. If you notice in your budget, we had allocated $15,000, and we hope to put a bid out, which we did, for the used SUV vehicle for that department. The bid came back without anybody bidding on it. So it does make it difficult. It really does. What I would ask is, we could go out with the same thing again, but if you remember, we had another issue in the past. We had an emergency purchase for, it was the building. So I would ask this time, if we look at the procurement policy, which we'll hopefully talk about later on, it's a low numbers here, but anything over a purchase of $7,500 or more, normally would require a bid. I'd ask that if the motion, if we can bypass the procurement policy so that the engineering department, planning zoning can go out there and actually get any used vehicle. So we will make sure that when they do that, that they, within that number of $15,000, we'll try our best to do that. So I guess this time it's difficult to go out there with a bid again and pick nothing back. So we could entertain a motion to bypass procurement policy for the purchase of planning zoning department's used vehicle.
Has a question.
Sure.
Why would there be no bids? Is it cloud number?
It's just, we've looked at it before, and I was writing it while part for a decent used vehicle. So we just didn't have a bid yet at that time.
So have you, do you know that you could get it for that?
Yeah. I haven't physically gone to look at them, but I've, I've looked, you know, at the sales and whatnot and what car dealerships have. And they do have vehicles within that price range.
And within your criteria?
Yeah.
And we also ask some support from our mechanic at the police department to help us out, make sure we're purchasing the correct vehicle.
I'll make a motion to waive the procurement policy.
For the purchase of the planning zoning.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, item number 3, discuss an act on line item transfers to be proposed by two board plaintiffs. There's a long list. We try to do this on a quarterly basis where we actually come back and say, oh, here's the things that we're short on, and here are where we're able to transfer from. You'll notice that in that list, there is a abundance of items mainly from our available for us from the recreational department, vehicle expenses, arrectation, things like that, where we could make sure we transfer them over so to balance out. There was one of the biggest ones, and I should say, two of the biggest ones. You have a computer line item. I should not go through the audit. We were over a little bit with the audit because of what was expended. And that was the auditor putting out more reports at the end, so that's why it's $6,000 in need. Recreation supplies, what we're looking to do is to be able to, and as my 3A is on here, there's a bid for the recreation department to go through and redo the track around Lions Park, the basketball court here, the basketball courts over at Oregon and Lucet. So they're going to crack fill, level them out, and then resurface those areas. So that was part of it. The other part of it has to do with making sure we have enough money so we can probably go forward with finishing off the tank, which is up in here in the planter park. Then there's also a general assurance, a little short there on computers. I've asked the Kyle to be sure that we're good for the end of the year and what he's actually allocated for the monies to the next, at least the end of the year. And his insurance at $15,000 should do it. The next one is the purchase services or hazard waste aid. You probably noticed that tomorrow's turnpike buyer thanked everybody because it did turn out very well, but the problem is it turned up too well. People over the, over a long period of time, they talk about what to do with items, whether it's batteries, whether it's paint, it could be old used oil. So what I've done in the turnpike buyers, you'll see that I've put an ad out there thanking them for that event. And also reminding them that during this time, you can actually get rid of oil at the following places. You can get rid of batteries, and actually they'll pay for the larger batteries for the vehicle or tractors, and actually go to Winkover and replace them. They'll pay for them. So that adds kind of giving them information that if they do this the right way, and they're conscious about what they're doing, then it's not going to cost us as much the next time to do it. But the bill we came in was much more than we anticipated. That's why we needed one in transfer to cover the rest.
What was the total bill?
It's about $32,000. There was the management of it, and it was also the company that did the work, so. Let's just take a shot. Can we open it up and say that everybody did a good job? They're coming up to get rid of all the items, but that's all.
I guess my question would be, when you have them come out, would they give you a quote approximately?
I actually have to quote from our Winston April. He's the waste management company that actually does the work. So he thought that that's what we would get, just from town. Definitely much more came out. We had, we had stuff coming from the sewer department. We have stuff coming from the school system. And we've asked them to pay part of the bill because.
I was just going to ask you that. So have you asked them to pay a share with that?
Yes.
So even with them paying the share, we still need to transfer it, which sounds a problem. What percentage, Joe, what share are they paying?
One was paying $2,500, the school $2,000 for the sewer. All right. Any other questions on that? All right, we have a shortage for our Memorial Day flags. I think that was just a way to order incorrectly. We do have a shortage there. Town hall building repairs. That's, that's all that kind of fixes everything we do. So that's why I wanted to put a little more in there, just to make sure we're okay. You'll notice something else that's on the bottom here. These are all the things that being brought to our attention at flat budget. You can see that the following people didn't get rid at all. Our selectman, finance director, administrative assistant, tax collector, counterpart, recreation salaries, and the other selectmen salaries. So what we'd like to propose is to ask the board of finance to consider a one-time payment, which we've calculated out, to cover that cost. That doesn't mean that our salaries go up any more. It just means it's a one-time pay after that. For those people who obviously were elected when it came to the budget season.
Does that because of the freeze, Kevin?
No, that was actually because of our putting our budget together. We had line items. We had them all for zero at the time. I was, in the past, had always worked with the finance director before, who had said, just zero, we'll take care of it and go. And Tom and I have talked about this before. We didn't catch that. So that's why we'd like to be able to catch up with a one-time check. It doesn't mean our salaries go up. It just means it's a one-time check. Where have monies come from? Again, there's, and just before I go any further, I should let you know that my request is going to be for the second line on the expenditures for recreation supplies to be $90,000 or $70,000, only because I want to be sure we covered everything we had to for the tank to get done properly. So the transfers are coming in from part-time salaries for recreation, vehicle expense, workers' comp, partner arrectation, electricity, and some contingency. And I think if we are correct, we might be able to utilize, because Kelly here is for one, one second. The additional $20 could either come from part-time salary. Okay. Because we also have some more unexpended money you might have at the end of the year for, if we don't have to go to referendums, there's another $23,000 there.
So the second item, vehicle expense.
Right.
Police vehicle expense.
Yep, this is something, if you look over the years, it's always leftover monies in there. So we just pay it when we find that money. But we look at a current value. It's basically just plenty of money to work on that right now.
So on that note, the next one, workers' comp. Is it $10,500? That's enough?
That's enough. We have credit right now. We talked about it last quarter. Finance made us so fine, right, too. Partner arrectation, we have not been able to expend enough money. There's, there's a bunch of people left that are, you know, can apply for partner arrectation. We try to keep it up there just in case, but I think we'd be fine for the rest of the year. So that's why we're looking to take $15,505 on that. Our electricity savings, $14,000, we have been using the coal. And so that's one of the things that we can utilize from taking money for any contingency. We do have that money there. I'm going to take an estimated guess. Kelly went through the contingency, compared that to our salary numbers that we were asking for, so we had enough. So if we were to make a motion, I would entertain that motion to be $147,000 for requested expenditures, and they're transferring from $147,000. So we're looking at $90,000 from part-time salaries, and that covers the recreation area because those are our partner areas.
$147,866.
Correct.
Kevin, do you have a total? Excuse me, I've always minded of transfers all year long.
I can get that for you. Yeah. I mean, I have to say that we've done a good job of freezing, not doing a lot of things. Recreation, obviously, is just one of the things, just have enough. I guess I would equate to the school system in COVID not having buses. So they're submitting the savings, big savings there. Any other thoughts, discussion?
So really, you're just looking for a motion to send the line item transfers to the board of plaintiffs?
Right.
So I'll make that motion to send the line item transfers to the board of plaintiffs.
And then about $149,000?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, 3A, which was added last week. General, discuss an act on the recreation bid. We had put the bid out there to see what we would get for numbers. Bid came back, and there were only two companies that came in. You'll see that they have the project meeting that day, and those are the numbers that were presented in front of me. And those were the companies which said they were needing around two shows. And again, in the bid, the end of the station of bid tells you what the bid was for. They did a walkthrough inspection at Lions Park, and also did a walkthrough of the Oregon park and then Lucet.
So Kevin, the numbers that aside the $38,484, is that a breakdown for the?
Key part, Harris. Yep. And then a question for the discussion. If you have a preference. Final market question, both of the companies, after the fact, just to make sure that you have some deposit with the numbers and what their dues are going to be. And you have a problem with the lower bid.
Make a motion to accept the high-end tennis from West Haven. Bid, $10,404,000. Basketball costs, logging track piece, I would say.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 4, discuss an act on building permit refund policy. I know you have that in the book. And they wanted to talk about something they haven't had policy for, so that's why they put it together. This is the building committee, a building office. I think economists in the past, they've had some businesses which have tried to open, managed to some financial issues, and backed out. Whereas they could transfer the ownership or the permit over to somebody else.
I'd like that they reconvened that.
Yeah. Especially for processing. So it would be your pleasure if you wanted to act on it tonight, if you wanted to have a building inspector come back in and you talk about it a little further. If there's any questions.
Item questions?
Item. Kevin, I have any questions?
Okay. It's your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to accept the tolling permit refund policy. That's it.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is, number 5 is for discussion. Discussion on the American Cares Act and monies embarked, your marks for playing field. This is something that everybody, every town is talking about, how they're going to be able to allocate monies. And I think on page 2 gives you the highlights of really what could be done, but there's a lot of other discussion being done by other towns. Some have subcommittees talking about how they're going to see if they allocate the monies properly. I can tell you, but we've had about eight different companies reach out and say, hey, we could really use the money. And I know they all do. The question is, where can we best allocate to support not only the town, but also the residents, the people that are in debt and in need, supporting a group of businesses that may have gone south, so to speak, and that's starting to struggle to come back. So there's all the different things we can do. But I think if we take a look at the top of page 2, it talks about four items, A, 3, D. Well, one is that really kind of talked out pretty new, or item D, the necessary investments in the water store, broadband infrastructure. As we can tell, we went through it the way that the government is trying to move things around, trying to make it so that we have hybrid meetings. We need to take the fish up at the times. That's one of the things that definitely needs to be done. We talked about it here. We try to do meetings when you should. You can get to go through, log on to your desk on Zoom and have an interaction with the meeting. But if the freeze is a screen or a scramble is voiced, we can't hear. That's not good because now we have to move everybody in one room. So far, we've got by. It's not the way we should be running. So that is something we definitely want to consider. And obviously, the next biggest one on that list, well, the biggest one on the list is really story. And I think we'll be talking about this a little further in our WDC meeting, how that it is way behind the DCF update is because there's a lot of things on that list in the public. So those are a few of the things I'm thinking of, as well as, you know, looking at nonprofits. What can you help out? I've had ideas with bringing some monies over to who's approved. That can actually help coordinate those monies, such as the United Services. Tell them, here's your task, and they go ahead and do that. Or someone going over to Project Pan, because that money really does translate to directly impact the people in the town. So there's lots of things. I just wanted to do a read-through, have some idea of what we could do. And I'd definitely like to add your input on this. We don't have to act on it at all tonight. It's a matter of, I mean, we're months away from getting any monies, that's for sure. The federal government was just talking to the state. The state came out today with their plans of partnership administration, but they didn't tell you which town is, how much each town is going to get. And when we have the package, we'll say that we have the package there that which can go a long way. I think something to read-through, if you have a chance, is to, is my ideas of what might be helpful to our residents, citizens, businesses, and working for, I would say, our town, the sewer department, too, keep in mind. We'll get to that in a piece in the evening.
So you're not really looking for a motion, then, Kevin? You're totally on it right now to.
I mean, I had an I mind, an I mind list when I first saw this. It was put up $1.3 million over to sewer departments that really need. I mean, the tank alone is $700,000. If we refurbish it, probably a little less. We have to go and utilize Plus O'Neil to go back to give us some better numbers. And that loan is $20,000. In that way, we're talking about the, all of the, for them, the upgrades that could be done for the generators. There's a lot of, and it's a student in the background, a lot of generators are outdated. So, and then there's other things that could be done. If you think about it, with Amazon coming forward, you have these off-station, there's some dire need of upgrade deal to, I mean, you can handle what it has right now, but who knows for how long? So this would be the time to utilize these monies to help with that upgrade there. So there's lots, a lot of things that are on play, and we'll see that when we get there. So we have, in front of the items 6, 7, and then the actual 8. Item 6 is to consider acts intended for between Town of Plainfield and American Public Service Employees Union, Local 1303, 358, Plainfield Dispatches for Collective Bargaining Agreement, covering period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023. And of course, I'm typing again, but the action of the board of select for the Town of Plainfield, according to Connecticut, General Statute, section 7474. And so that's what we have going there. Item number 7, I'm kind of batching these together because we need to make the motion appropriately. Consider an act on the initiation of two predilect practice charges with the state board of labor relations, which means that we would like to go into, go into executive session, and therefore we'd like to invite also our town attorney. So we entertain a motion to discuss collective bargaining strategy, as well as potential litigation, and invite the town attorney to join us in that session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining strategies, as well as potential litigation, and invite the town attorney to join the session. And also appoint an instructor.
Thank you. Second. Motion number 2. Any other discussion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye. If there are none, we'll go to executive session. The time is? Okay, entertain a motion by an executive session where we have no votes.
No vote.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now 18, 18, yeah. All right. So on item number 6, I would entertain a motion to move the board of select and approve request for funds necessary to implement the agreement between Town of Plainfield and UPSU Local 1303, 358, which is the dispatchers for a period from July 1, 2020 to July, I'm sorry, June 30, 2023.
I'll make a motion if the board of select can approve the request for funds necessary to implement the agreement between the Town of Plainfield to implement the agreement between the town of Plainfield and UPS EU local thirteen oh three dash three fifty eight dispatches for the period of July first twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Okay, motion and second, end of the discussion. Everyone down, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, on item number seven, I would entertain a motion that the board select authorize and initiate two prohibitive practice charges with the state board of labor relations.
Make that motion, that we initiate, after the initiation, two prohibitive practices, charges with state board of labor relations.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Everyone down, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do have a few other things going on in town, I think this is a good time to start in the other section. There is a movement to go forward with a project pen food drive in dedication in honor of our main kettle, and that'll be Saturday evening. At nine thirty, you're all invited, the dedication will be on the bench on the park side of it. We are actually going to be doing that at nine thirty. And after the dedication of the bench, we are going to move over to a project pen for the drive in honor of our main kettle at ten AM. We plan to be here for, oh my, three hours, ten to one. So for those people who are interested in helping to support Project Pen, please consider coming up that day. You can always look online to see what the, or you can also make a donation to Project Pen as well. So that's happening. I know we do have some discussions going on about, there's fundraisers going on for the bike lane. I wish I brought my people with me to explain that to people, but if you are interested, there is online, both on the town website and Facebook page, that there is information there, if you want to get in contact with anybody to help out. And I can tell you right now, speaking of the town, Facebook page is active, very active all the time. The town website, we've been working with the company to complete that, and within a few weeks, we're looking to roll it out as a finished version. So I'm going to ask all the departments, please go and take a look at the newer version. Look and see what mistakes are, we'll see if we can fix them up, and maybe so it's accessible to the public very soon, and hoping in three weeks we'll be done. If you'd like, I can send you the link to have you take a look at it. Okay. All right, sounds good. Anything else for other? Everyone down, entertain a motion to adjourn.
If it's acceptable, can you explain to us a little bit what you're going to do with the tracks, the resurfacing?
Yes. Have you looked at the track that's out here?
Yeah.
They've actually repatched it.
Yep.
All the companies that are coming in, the company that will be coming in is going to look to make sure that there's no other cracks in there, they'll hot seal those as well, and then the same thing with the basketball courts. Once that's done, there'll be an overlay on top of this, so it's resurfacing.
With the overlay, is that another coating on basketball, or just a sealer?
A sealer.
Okay, thank you.
I think if you can all stand the color, it's going to be the high school color orange. So we'll see.
Make a motion, Richard.
I'll second that.
And twenty-three, we are all adjourned, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On business, and we're kind of re-capping this, but majority of this is probably going over to eventual discussion for helping out the support for the sewer. So this is discussing American Care Act and monies in your market, Plainfield. What I had Stephanie do is give a list of all the things for what we could do. We're definitely looking to upgrade our generators, because there are some generators which are impacting city, update the operating controls, we found that those had problems with the last storm Isaiah, so we've definitely been to look at that.
Where is that one?
Oh, for the headworks. Where is that? The headworks, that's the headworks.
Where is headworks? Are you aware of the main is?
Yeah.
Like when you want to sort those plants, it's a road, it was all up.
Just splits off there.
There were conversations over there.
Because that generator was down, I don't see one from nineteen eighty-eight.
I think it'd be better working, knowledge of my says location.
Oh, I see, no, no, it's eighty-six.
And cemetery road, off the station, and I know eight is the one I want to circle for right now, have a generator replaced, or replace the drywall of the dog track. Because we are having other businesses come in, it might be something really to consider, supporting that to get to upgrades. And have to have a little more description of what that is for emissions monitor. So our next time we'll have Stephanie come up and do a little more detail to this. And of course, the usual thing, if there's extra money. But these things give us an opportunity to look at how much they cost, just in page, page two, two. Because we are having other businesses come in, it might be something really to consider, supporting that to get to upgrades. And have to have a little more description of what that is for emissions monitor. So our next time we'll have Stephanie come up and do a little more detail to this. And of course, the usual thing, if there's extra money. But these things give us an opportunity to look at how much they cost, just in page, page two, two. So there's a listing there for every one of the items that we're discussing, how much it would cost for upgrades, and I think that would be very helpful to know. So we're trying to put numbers together, and a great point, you know, we made earlier about, can we do something to help re-establish the small business, small, we used to years ago? Is there something we need to do to help nonprofits? Is there something we can do? Everywhere along the line, we'll find something that we could help out, but the question is, if we do the right thing here for the cemetery, that lasts us much longer for the future, we aren't, we don't have to worry so much about any rents to do things that are great. So I think that's kind of an important piece, but we'll keep looking for grants, it doesn't , I bet, stop us.
And these would come right off the capital.
Exactly, that's the other big thing, coming off the capital improvement. Capital improvement is a, you know, we need to keep an eye on, and I think that over the years, we take a look at the capital improvement plan, one of the things that sticks in my mind always is the fact that the school systems have two buildings which have outdated heating systems, and that's been on there for twenty years. So we can't, we can't continue to do that in this case. If we do the right thing, we should be setting ourselves up for future businesses coming in to help support that flow coming through, and not worry about the generator knocking out during the storm. The idea also, as I talked to Stephanie, was, any of these, like, let's say, the headworks run this, I'm thirty-six years old, I would get her opinion upon how well it's still going to be able to run, use it as a backup. So if we ever had a storm again, and one of them goes out, you almost have something as a backup, just to go, so it's not to wait for someone to bring it in. So these are the things we'll be looking at over the next few weeks. Definitely, that's a lot to read through, the American Cares Act, and it's something I think we should consider over the next, before the end of fiscal year, we'll be standing out, we're going to get, we know the money is not really going to come in for maybe two months, at least, so it's time to start looking.
Or it's coming to.
If the American Cares Act is followed through by the federal government giving to the state, and the state decided, like we did today, how much is going to be allocated for each area? Then they're going to figure out how they're going to get it down to the town.
And it said there'd be one payment this year or next?
Well, we don't know, we don't know if they're going to help you. I'm hoping that you have some more guidance, some questions, waiting for you guys coming from the other.
I have a question on this first page.
Yep.
It's about the solar panels.
Where is it located?
No, plus on the, some of the solar panels, we're putting a space for the proposed secondary tanks.
Yeah, we can, the solar panels, it's kind of like, it lessens the area they can work with for the tank, so we have to either move them for now, or find another place to load them. It's very tight in that area, so.
That's why I was wondering what you.
Yeah, but Stephanie can help us out with that, she can guide us along with her opinion with you for that, moving, those are the round ones, so not that bad to move them, hopefully.
I wonder if that's something you have come to, too.
Hopefully you can ask. We can ask about recreation from, like, plus or minus, they can do it. So that's a little bit of a read, kind of figure out what the numbers are in the final time, and where we'll get the monies in the future, so that's some homework for now. Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn, so.
I'll second that.
And it's eight thirty-two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's very much.